Call the planning. Call the planning zoning commission meeting to order is Thursday, May 27th, 2021.
The license. The right of the United States of America and to be the right of which it stands on a mission under God in this world with the routine assistance of law.
Another termination of Quan will call from my left.
Commissioner Bradish, President Frankenberger.
Commissioner Bailey is at and chair any announcements? They will clarify later. We have consent agenda approval made 28th, 2021 minutes. Okay, so up on the screen there's the public hearing procedures and if everybody can glance at those real quick. We're online and we're also on Zoom, so we are on live TV, so everybody needs to be courteous to each other. So being it's 5:31. We'll start our first file. We're located in 1500 Highway 2, San Point, Idaho, First Board Conference Room, online Zoom, spell conference and YouTube livestream. Our first file is conditional use permit 0010-21. Conditional use permit RV park Teresa Stevens is requesting to install a 21 space RV park with power and water hookups on a portion of parcel RP 56 and 01E 20160A. Property is own recreational. Project is located on Highway 200 in a portion of section 12, township 56 North Ring 1 East Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Okay, hearing none, the staff will present the file.
Okay, so that's requesting the 21 space.
Can I get you your name?
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Daniel Britton, the record. Okay, so the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for 21 space RV park. It's site located atop of Highway 2 on the east of Hope. It's 13 acres, mostly slab with some timber and wetland that migrates toward the center of the property. It's in a zone recreational and is budding a R5 zone as well as other recreational zones. It is a planted lot. It does contain map wetlands as well. There's a delineation for that property. So there's about your staff for. The services that we find on the parcel are an individual well, individual sector. Fire we stem on hours of facility and then I saw district number 84. This is the proposed site just where the RV will be placed. Now, this is the site of your entire parcel that meets the criteria set forth in VCRC. These are the standards it is up against and viewed for it should meet all those standards set forth in the Stafford report. Part of the requirements need no aid of VCRC 1233, motion is stable. Provide adequate water supply and fire suppression. They did indicate on their application that it's large supply through individual well. They did got 100 gallon plus per minute asking. They're not going to be offering sewage disposal. We're going to be required to take their RVs and the trailers. The dump station is indicated close once two miles away. They are required to have tree can be if they're meeting with 125% and most of those trees will be found on the south end of the property indicated by equity line you see on the screen. Their comp plan designation is resort community, which provides resort communities for urban life density for areas centered around the recreational areas developed in winter and water sports golf, hiking, urban services are provided. So that's criteria that have been incorporated on plan. Based on the review, we found in the background of staff report, they are meeting those conditions. So conditions of approval that I have to meet if this passes this evening, it will be the wire 15 building location permits, provide adequate parking, we add to show on the site plan. Walk it past to connect RV park home area, RV pads and other amenities that are on the property together. Landscape plan showing is a defiance. Will make the building location requirement to that as well. The other condition is the project will be designed around 12497 and the requirement there is that each RV space provide 1800 square feet per path. Not to put up temporary stormwater or full measures when they go through the initial work as well as making sure that there is a permit stormwater kind of place. Definitely setbacks for their wetland according to their delineation. Since there is a function well on the property. So inclusion, the move to approve this file CP 0010-21 for RV park amenities funding that is important to general specific protectors are coming up with that to buy or found advice vote is enumerated in the college decisions law based upon evidence submitted to the at the time staff report this parent test room received this hearing. For the move to adopt the following findings of fact, conclusion of law that written or has amended ration that could be taken to obtain the conditions permitted, the conditional conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
So that was one of the motions that kind of changed up there, demonstrating that that was a motion for the commission to read or agreeable or disapprove. So I think you're off like a page. You need to move back up.
My apologies.
That's all right. It's your first presentation. So staff analysis. So if you can hit the staff analysis. Okay. Well, we have any questions for staff at this point?
I have a question with Commissioner Bradish. How does the county code on RV relate to the comment by the Samoan fire team?
We have our reason why I think Samoans would just emissions for the fire height.
Would their building location permit in on the sign off from Samoan, I guess what I'm asking.
No.
But just right.
Right.
Whoever. Any other question? Okay, thank you. The staff or excuse me, the project representative, the Benny, she would like to come up and speak to the commission. And name and address for the.
Address of the project or my resident address?
Your residence here in town.
Okay, I'm Teresa Stevens with at 264 Oakley Road in Hope. Project address is not how it should have been. I'm just going to read something I prepared. I don't know if we're allowed to answer questions, but after our reasons for.
Give me a chance for you to follow me.
My name is Teresa Stevens and I'm a lifelong Bonner County resident in Hope for 10 plus years. My husband Mike and I are requesting a conditional use permit to develop a 21 space RV park on our 13 plus acre parcel off of Highway 200, the open central road. Please keep in mind that we aren't asking for any special privileges or variances. We're simply looking to utilize our property in a way that our current zoning, which is recreation allows us to. We truly believe our proposed park will be a great addition to our zone. As we are active members of our community and own numerous businesses in our small town, we've heard many rumors and concerns regarding the development that I want to provide for clarity on. The concern we've heard most is regarding sewage disposal and understandably so. We love our lake and will not do anything that will have a negative impact on its healthiness and well-being. We will not be offering onsite sewage disposal in a traditional sense. There is an approved RV dump at Samoan Campgrounds of Public Use located about two miles from our proposed park. Additionally, there is a local sewer pumping service that will come onsite and pump out RVs if in winter day. They already come out weekly to service RV parks on the peninsula that also don't have onsite sewage disposal. So there's two options for those to get rid of their wastewater. As the Panhandle Health District, either both suitable and approved methods for wastewater disposal from RVs and airboats. We will be diligent in our management of the park that all guidelines we follow regarding its ongoing issue. We do plan on having water and power dumps at each RV site. For those of you who have concerns about concerns about the map wetlands that are on our parcel, we've paid a professional certified wetland biologist to come out and provide us with a wetland utility survey which we've submitted to the county and will build a proposed park in the upland areas and will observe and reflect all cutbacks in regards to the wetlands. We've also had concerns regarding traffic safety. While we understand a concern from those that are super familiar with the property, the access off the highway is a long grid bridge off of Highway 200 and traffic can be seen coming from a safe distance in either direction, approximately 500 plus yards either way. My husband safely pulled out of this out of there numerous times weekly hauling large equipment on full size trucks for our activation business. Our park will strictly be for recreational use and not offer long-term housing. Although we understand there is a serious housing crisis happening in Bonner County currently, our development will not be a solution for people looking for long-term and permanent residences. Our current operating plan is to open seasonally, beginning late spring and closing out for the season and late fall. While we haven't finalized our landscaping plan yet, I'd also like to share that we do have plans to provide a privacy buffer of some sort along the highway and in between each RV space. While the parking area for the RVs would be gravel, there would be green space with a picnic table at each spot to provide a pleasant green aesthetic. In closing, I'd like to ask for support as we work together to better our community.
Thank you. Any questions in the applicant? Name for the record.
Sir, thank you. Milton Allerton, the Bonner County planning director. For the record, wanted to take just a minute and just go over a little bit more on this, on the statutes that regulate this topic. So, so it's, so folks have a little more understanding. A few years ago, the Bonner County Board, county commissioners adopted a change to the zoning ordinance. And in the zoning ordinance, they allow RV parks, recreational vehicle parks as a conditional use permit in all the zones except for forest 40 and industrial. And so an RV park, at that, once they adopted that change in the ordinance, an RV park can be located in any zone with a conditional use permit. What that means is that you see on here that there's Ps like rental warehouses. P. That means that in the commercial zone, a rental warehouse is permitted outright. Somebody can just come in and apply for a building location permit to get that. With the conditional use permit, they set up a set of standards for, for example, RV parks. There's a set of standards in the code. And if the applicant meets those standards, then, then the planning commission is authorized, almost obligated, if you will, to grant that conditional use permit. Because all, all the applicant has to do is meet those standards of the RV park. So, so whether or not it, whether or not it's a personal choice, you want this next to you, you don't want this next to you. That decision was already made when the board said RV parks can go in any zone in Bonner County. They, they already made that decision. So, so that, that's already allowed. Now the question is, is does the project meet the standards? And so if we go down to 12497, which is RV parks and campgrounds. These are the standards that this project has to meet in order to be located on this property. And so it can have on, on a, on a property, an RV park can have five RV spaces and five campground units per acre. This application is only asking for 21 units. You can, and it's a 13 acre parcel, so you can take those five units per acre and condense them. So the 13 acres stays intact, but the project is condensed down. So, and that's, and that's the way this is drawn out. They could have also asked for an equal amount of campsites. Okay, but they didn't. This application is only asking for 21 RV sites. The if they chose to increase the number of RV spots or campsites, they would have to come back through this process and we would have to make sure that it met all the standards. So the, one of the things that staff does in order to make sure that it meets the standards is we send it out to agencies. And this was sent out to all of the agencies that would be affected by this. We received no comment from Idaho Transportation Department. And so, so the road issue, they obviously didn't think there was a big enough concern with road issue to have this application addressed it. So it's not addressed, okay? They, we send it to, we send it out to DEQ and they submit their comments and Idaho fishing game and we send it out to IDL. And we send it out to all the different agencies and based on the comments we receive, we make recommendations based on those comments. So there was no comments, as you saw in the Stafford report, there was no comments of significance from any of the agency having a concern with this RV park. So one of the things that was added to this ordinance was that once it's approved, they're required to give building location permit for the project. And that, that enables the county to ensure that the project is built according to the way the conditional use permit was approved. Because all the questions cannot necessarily be addressed in the application. So, and so the stormwater plan, for example, now if the, if the commission approves this, they will go create that stormwater plan. They'll bring it into the county, the county will review it as part of the building location permit and we'll have our county engineers review the stormwater plan and, and then we'll move forward once, once it meets all of those criteria. So, so that's kind of how this process works. When you and, and so again, back to the, back to the staff presentation. Based on, based on all the criteria reviewed in the code, the, the staff recommends approval of this. And so now.
Thank you, Chris. That's all right. Any questions, Milton? All right. So we're going to move to a public comment. Jeannie, we'll take the folks online if any.
No one's actually raised hands.
Okay, no one has raised hands. So we'll take the first person here, John, John Owens.
I'm Neil and Joe. Okay, that's fine. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Come on up and name and address for the record, please.
I spoke at your office. My name is Joseph Taylor from Ziden Hope. I spoke at your office in Lending. I was told that I could submit a two-page written comment along with 70 signatures of opposition. So I'll pass those on. One for Robert Lyer. Joseph Taylor.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I would first like to offer that I don't know that I would necessarily agree with no comment from an agency means that they don't have a comment. One of the agencies that did respond gave a comment saying specifically that they had no comment. They had no opposition. So not receiving something from Idaho Park from the transportation does not necessarily mean they don't have anything. I'd like to say before you, thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this project. I first learned of this project four days ago at a dinner with some neighbors. And I've had an opportunity to speak to nearly 100 people in the whole community in the last four days. The number of people that are in opposition to this project that I've spoken with are, is almost ununited. First of all, I'd like to offer that as we talk about provisional use permits for stuff there. My understanding was this was being compared to the Onco Resort that was offered, adopted beyond hope in approximately 2008 when the Onco lost their sewage will do. It was an opportunity to offer a solution for an operating functioning campground to continue operating. It's quite a different situation to ask for this sort of conditional use permit where we call sewer 30 miles away to a campground that does not yet exist. If you have to do that, performing concursions and back bends and backflips to do this. It's obvious that this is an indelicate site. Okay? Nowhere in proposal is there any comment or request or discussion about what will happen if there is a spill at the site. If you're choosing an optimal site, the campground you choose a site that has perk capability. If there's a spill, you clean up the solids and then you perk it in as well with pollution. That's the way you clean it up. You can't do that at the site. The site has a wetland directly attached, directly adjacent. I'd also like to offer that the 40 foot setback is a little bit of a it's, it's referring to permanent buildings and the, and the reason, if you look at the toe, it is set inside the 40 foot setback. The only thing that allows this is that RVs are not considered permanent residences. That's my understanding according to the reading. Our, this is again, we're talking about 70 people, 70 signatures in front of you that feel that this should be, if we're going to, if we're going to put a campground here, it needs to be self-contained. If it's not self-contained, there's a problem. There's a reason for it. Okay? Next, referring to the Idaho Department of Transportation and lack of comment. Lack of comment doesn't mean no concern. The Idaho Department of Transportation spent a great deal of money creating the turn lane inside turn lane, center turn lanes at the intersection of Conventional Road and Firehouse.
Sorry, you've had your six minutes.
I appreciate it. Might have finished the last then. I'll finish. Thank you very much. If you go to the extent of allowing this, you're, you're simply about 250 to 300 yards of the road and all of my, the Idaho Department of Transportation step on developing that intersection is negated. I would hope that you would have to read through the comments that were then carefully chosen by 70 people with signatures attached and would request a denial of this provisional use permit. Thank you.
Tony R, your D, you correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Whoop, come on up and.
I'm, I'm just agreeing with what you said.
Okay. All right, Greg Field. That's all right, Drew. That's okay.
I'm in Idaho though. I expect. I'm the resident. My name is Greg Field. I'm the resident. Last week I was elected sewer board, health support sewer board. I take office on. I met the vice chairman Bruce Butler yesterday and discussed all the secrets of health support sort of which I can't talk to you about. But I would like to welcome frankly the planning portion of the county to enter into a relationship with us where we discuss everything having to do with the peninsula. Even that is our district. Okay? We're the sewer board. We have a sewer process, sewer plant. We don't have a lot of customers, actually none on the peninsula, but it's, it's just the idea of it. We need to communicate. We have a relationship with each of the cities. We cooperate for any building construction that anybody verifies they have. So that's, that's one of my basic opposition to this is I'm a geologist undergraduate, graduate, and then I recognize and I draw various things that I actually have some in my background. This area is a lot, putting in the food field into spill would be very dangerous. Everything that was going to go downhill, down the slope, locks, off grounds. The locks, the lock that's underneath it, right into the the end of North Port Brag, doesn't circle. doesn't circulate. That's already rich in heaven, it's invested with all kinds of foreign plants. It's really, it's an area that needs to be cleaned up. I don't know whether, who's gonna do it, the responsibility for sewage, but, you know, invasive plants. Well, um, also the question of distances, are you talking about interdistances? It's pretty separate to the lake. That, that area is only about four inches deep, but, um, again, I think that we as a sewer district would like to postpone this decision so that when we can communicate thoroughly with the planning board and pay with us about some simple facts. We think that the plan itself that is laid out right now is dangerous. The idea that you can put stuff off, so, including the gray water. I'm actually the co-owner, home park, and then another RV park, okay? Not in this state, elsewhere. I don't think they're talking about very practically.
Okay, you're on the clock.
I think, I appreciate it. But I would like to talk to the planning board, establish any patients.
We try here, he's my...
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll contact you later.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wish to speak? You yielded your time, didn't you, sir?
Uh, yes.
The lady in black, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Rebecca Green, and I'm a resident of the county. Uh, address, I currently live at two five seven Cedar Lane. Um, and though I'm thoroughly new to the area, my husband's family hosted during the eighteen hundreds, and we have connections with the city for a long time. I think the most important thing that I want to share today is working with support for us to get a mining, and any decisions that we make, and if we're actively, if we're, if we're... Um, I want to show my support for Mike and Teresa in the RVs, because they will do. Um, Mike and Teresa help me cut the line, so I got the book, they own two small businesses, um, and have a proven track record of successful ground providing, providing great quality of work and giving back to the community. Um, they also provide employment opportunities for locals to use those opportunities. Um, and I'm not an expert in environmental issues, but what I do know is I know Mike and Teresa, I know that work happens, and I know that they will do everything that is needed to make sure that they run a state, um, and create RV parks because it's the people that they are. I love that they're choosing to make it a small RV park, right? I found it really interesting what was shared about the plan, that they could have asked way more RV sites, but they didn't, right? They're choosing to stay looking at small, that fits within their, uh, you know, area and the setbacks of wetlands and all of that, so that it will be kind of an intimate setting. And I would be glad to have my... Um, I also know that they're great neighbors, and so that they will do everything they can to mitigate any traffic, it's easy concerns that the county presents or if they have questions, because again, it's the kind of people that they are, and they're used to running a small business, part of the community. Um, and I'm excited and thrilled for them to take this opportunity, um, so that we can work together to make it better. I know that we all have different ideas of what would be better, right? And so for me, the most important thing is that we remember the work.
Thank you. So... Anybody else who hasn't spoken, yielded to... Uh, closed public comment, staff is going to...
Applicant.
Applicant. And staff can answer and clarify any questions. If you want to talk to your neighbors about what's going on.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. You said again.
Yeah, you, no, go ahead.
Uh, like I mentioned before, when I first came into this project, we are choosing not to do sewage disposal on the property. We, there is nothing wrong with the land, we have to approve permitted and built as planned, set systems on property. We frankly are just choosing not to with the smaller RV park and the length of data we anticipate, that we just really don't see the demand for it. Um, and so we just, just chose not to with the RVs done at Samo and two miles away. It seems super close to add another one, and our facility. The only, only rebuttal I have.
Okay, so could I ask, do I have this question? So even though the Idaho Transportation Department did not make a comment, said no comment, you know if your site has a commercial encouragement permit?
I don't know.
Or is it residential?
I don't know the answer to that, but the, so there's a rental property on, or a rental home on the, on the property that was there when we bought it, and it was a commercial facility. It was built back.
It's had commercial use off and on for many years.
Yeah, so...
But I don't know what the status is.
I don't know either.
So that, that could end up...
Potentially, yes, potentially, no.
...the condition of approval.
Yes.
To get commercial from it from ITV.
Yeah, and of course.
I just better advise you that in the process, if they look at it specifically from that, they might add condition of approval of that. So I don't know what that would be.
You want to clarify anything?
If I could make one additional comment?
We have closed public comment, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
So that, in the, in the code under the... So in the code underwater sewer, um, it said that each site may provide utility connection to putting water and sewage disposal system. Uh, when this ordinance was written, the commissioner understood that, that because of the, the solar pipes and because of the roleness of the county, that a dry RV park would be appropriate in, in some areas. And so, and so that's why it was written that way. So they, they, they weren't required, they're not required to put in a septic system or sewage treatment system for this RV park. The ones that are shown on the plan are, are their personal ones, they're, because they're in their area, right? So that's why they're shown on this, they weren't intended to be for this. If you know.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close that and...
Can I ask a question of Mr. Davis?
No, we're, we've done with...
I just want to ask about the ITV, the thing you signed, commercial, is that a code? What is, what is...
It's an encroachment permit to get on the highs.
That's what I was referring to, it comes out of the Idaho Administrative Proceedings Act that the app requires.
So again, let me help, when we issue building location permits, they're required to show that they have access onto the county road from Road and Bridge, Long County Road and Bridge, or if the property is located on the state highway or independent highway district, they have to show that they have a, an encroachment permit from those agencies. If it's a commercial use, they have to have a commercial encroachment, either from Barna County, if it's a Barna County road, or if it's an independent highway district, or if it's a state highway. So again, those things are typical of the building location permit. Everybody has to have that chip when they come in.
Okay, so we'll open it up for commissioners, hold deliberations, and a motion to approve or deny.
Yes, Commissioner Braddish, law word, clarifying thing, I'm reading this paper, I just want to make sure every, all the seventy people from Hope that signed this letter know that the Samoan is owned by a forester.
Yes, I, I know that. Yes, exactly. I caught that late, or I was pointed out, but yes, but instead of changing, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I understand, yes, it was hot, not changed.
Just, I, just to clarify, ensuring your last comment within the paper, we don't need to do anything as far as ensuring the present common current permit. You guys will do that automatically as part of the building location permission process, right?
Right. And it, yes, it doesn't need to be explicitly called out. Sure, it could be, because it's going to happen anyway. So it will essentially as a condition of approval, they'll have to do it. So if you can, but I wanted to put that in for everybody to kind of know that it's going to occur. And with that, go to ITV, it's, it's Barna County, the state highway, which is saying, as was stated.
Yep, when you're quite personally going, is the core engineers becoming involved also?
All right. Not unless they're gonna...
No, not unless, it sounds like they already have been, they're doing a full, for, for permitted, you know, they've got the delineation, and so I get to view that kind of a double efficient permit. Staff will be doing... Since that's already based on what Tom DiGiorno said, it's... So that, it's really one step ahead of them already, and for the fish for the gap study.
This, this site, like I said earlier, it's has been used for a number of things over the decades. And I think it's interesting too, that they're proposing to use a portion of the property that's clear, and, and the tree buffer to the south is southeast, whatever you want to call it, remains, and that separates that property from the other properties further out, Health and Sport Bay. But it's a benefit of my proposal to tear into the trees.
Ready, thanks, Mr.? Commissioner Braddish, I moved to approve this project file, CP zero zero one zero dash two one, for a twenty-one space RV park, finding that isn't according to general specific objectives of the Barna County Comprehensive Plan and Barna County Revised Code at a new rate, all including block, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff floor was repaired and testimony was received at its hearing. I further moved to adopt the following, finding the facts, conclusions, and lives. The action that could be taken to obtain the condition of permit is to complete the conditions of approval, and as adopted, this action is not resolved without taking a greater...
Commissioner Braddish made a motion to approve additional use permit zero zero one zero dash two one, RV park Teresa Stevens. Is there a second?
Commissioner Frankenbach, I'll second that motion.
Frankenbach, it's second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Sure. All right, okay. Motion, fair. Thank you. Okay, being it's, uh, six fifteen, our next file is zone change zero zero one two dash two one, zone change rule ten to rule five, Mirror Lake LLC requesting to rezone the property from rule ten to rule five. Parcel, RP five five N zero three W zero five one five zero zero zero, zero eight, is approximately sixty acres located in the rural residential land designation in the comprehensive plan. The project is located just past the start of Jewel Lake, of Jewel Lake Road, and a portion of section five, township fifty-five north, range three west, Boise, Meridian. Any comments to the visitors?
Yeah, this is the Commissioner Braddish, I work for the Idaho Department of Parks, and we have various dealings with Jake's company, but it's not in the Jewel Lake area.
Okay, thank you, Brad, for the space, I know. So the public hearing procedures are up on the board, you've already reviewed those. Yeah, introduce yourself and...
Uh, Daniel Britt for the record.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So the app can propose a zone change from a rule ten to a rule five, the purposes of dividing the property into five and ten acre lots. Parcels, butting the properties are currently zoned art ten and four is forty. Parcels are comprehensive plan designation of rule five and ten acres. Parcels are located off Jewel Lake Road and Saddle. Parcels generally have slopes that are ten fifteen, ten to thirty percent greater timber. Parcels are currently vacant. And it's served by the self-cured Sable Fire District and Northern Lights. So background on the project, we've got about sixty acres that are unplatted and vacant, but they're currently zoned art ten. Very special access off of Jewel Lake Road. The property is going to be served by individual wells and septic. And fire for fire services, Northern Lights to power, and it's still in the full district of number eight, for Barna County. This is an oversight of the environmental features. I like, each area here, it's a sixty acres total, and it's showing the slopes. The slide on the right-hand side is current zoning, there are ten designation. And for its bike here is that four is forty that we're talking about. So in complex, the rural residential portion of it, um, provides residential developments in areas where services are not available, and slopes may vary at thirty percent, which is for the both of these pieces of property to be in a previous slide. There'll be low density, potential attacks, the low impact to the resources and exposure, loss of properties and lives, small-scale, prebiological uses and residential developments are permitted in complex for this, um... This, existing zoning is rural, they're just asking for it to come down to our five from an art ten, emission standards and set forth for the existing zoning. Now I'm trying to give you an opportunity to read that whole thing. Watch free. So the preferred zoning is still within the rural zoning district. For our ten to their five. Appropriate based on the comprehensive plan for this designation. So going back and I don't believe I included a map here, so I apologize. It shows us very well. But within this area, the vast range anywhere from twenty acres all the way down to the smallest fifteen point. It's a take in the room for the talk correctly. Majority of them were right about six, seven. In this portion here, and then the larger portions out there. This is all by the government, so the large chunk, I recall is, and it's simply. Just give some perspective. Is there any see comments ever received? There were some other comments written, the issues that they were concerned with also was the systems for the proposed parcels. As well as soil types and the tree coverage. So in conclusion, the project is consistent with Barn County Vice Code and the general and specific object, objects, objectives. With the Barn County Comprehensive Plan based on the information found in the background portion of the staff report. And so straight by the findings, the facts, completions of law, conditions of approval below. So the parcels in question for the rezone aren't designated by the comprehensive residential. So within the South Coast Fire District and sort of their open lights. Once again, individual wells and subjects will be able to be installed on the parcels. Access up to Lake Road. There's streams or other bodies of water on the property. So inclusion, those all changes keeping with the comprehensive plan or the art ten on rural residential five, ten acres. And it does have access from the pump right away. And the parcels are characterized by my with the rural residential.
Any questions, staff, this time?
Commissioner Frankenbach, I have one. This property seems to have a reasonable significant amount of slopes that are above thirty percent. Did you happen to do an estimate of maybe what percentage of it?
Uh, no, I agree.
It's like twenty-five, thirty percent maybe. It's high volume.
It didn't seem like it was character. Isn't that.
I guess it seems like a significantly greater percentage than what we obviously.
All right, thank you. With that, applicant's representative would like to come up and speak on the project.
Yep.
Name and address, if you're ready.
That's Limer. Hello, my name is Jake Weimer. My address is two fifteen East Loss, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Like the guy said earlier, I'm also not the big public speaker, but I'll try my best. I represent Mayor Lake LLC. When submitting the zone change application, I considered the relevant factors of the property. Unbalanced, I believe the zone change is consistent with the Barn County devised code and a good thing for the county overall. The property is designated rural residential already and borders parcel for already five acres or less. The site is generally south facing with well drained soils. The soil is not tillable with farmland and is also poor soil for timber production. Our site plan takes the property into account with both road layout and postal layout. Home sites would logically be placed on relatively flat benches on the property. Our site plan calls for half of the property to remain in ten acre lots, which is already allowed in the presence only. Our county is growing rapidly, as we all know. And as we all know, affordability is a challenge for local people with their own local salaries. This zone change will allow for additional lots to come online in an undersupplied market. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the representative?
So if I'm reading what you've shown as a site plan, which is not the subject of the zone change, but it's what you intend to do, it could do. Afterwards, you'd be essentially with the zone change, you'd be adding three of those slots that what could be achieved on the property. Correct. So again, approving that site plan and it's up to you to pursue that. Not holding you to your word or anything, but sure, that's, that's what you indicated that through the most factors that you said that. Could very well turn out to be that's the.
Yeah, and that's just the way, the way I'm way is that's just.
Right, which, which gets to this question about the swap. You know, that Commissioner Frank, Dan Frank was talking about, there are significant flaws on the property. But looking at the road that you laid out, that certainly indicates that. Yeah, so those are the limitations of the property. Correct.
Do you have pictures of the roads so that we can see them?
I don't know if there are in the presentation or non-staff.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be for the, oh, we'll get that when we get the public that comes.
Yeah, and we're talking about his own change of this one, not a subject. Right. So it's a little. Trying to get the cart before the horse.
Now you can show them all that structure you watched. There we go. Drill down with the property. There's the lake. All right.
So those are the parcels we're talking about right here. And there was comment about streets of the road.
Well, we're not answering public phone.
Oh, I didn't.
We're still between.
Yeah, I came from that.
That's probably who. Right. The road is probably exists. That's it all.
Yeah, we don't have, okay.
No, there's no date on that photo. It's old.
So Commissioner Braddish has probably walked all that at one time.
I have not. I don't usually dress mask.
Well, but. Any more questions, staff?
I.
You guys, all right, so we'll close that. Open it up for public comment. No online, still. Okay, so there's a couple of folks that are opposed to the spot, is that correct? Would you like to speak, skirt of the month?
Well, I can, the wife, I'm the speaker.
Okay, so you went, you can.
I'm representing our family. This project is taking place just behind my property. And my concern is my husband, I bought twenty acres just under two years ago, not quite two years yet. And we were told at the time, we really did our homework and researched it. And we're told that those must be maintained with the parcels. We said divided and sold ten, we divided it to you and sold it to our neighbor. And a friend of ours who's going to build just the world out, so. We're a little disappointed that it seems to me just by saying what's going on on the property, they've already taken out tons of trees. And if deficit looks, the look is unbelievable and the slopes are much more steeper than a thirty percent. It. The winds, we get those winds that come in and so the trees that they did, a few that they left standing have fallen. Because they're not supported any longer like any other trees. And I just with my desire is that, that all of you would walk, take a look at them and walk that property up there and get a look for yourself. And I just can't imagine it even coming in with home and I realize the, the shortage of home in this area. I have full understanding of that. I kind of disagree with the affordable housing because I'm seeing what the houses are going for in this area and I doubt that they will be affordable for the income for most families in Idaho. And that is a rural area, ten acres. We have lots of wildlife out there that I'm concerned about. We, we frequently get deer and moose walking through our property. Just two days ago, there was a bear down by Jewel Lake Road and I'm sure it came down off of the mountain. There's all the habitat has been destroyed already. It's devastating. I just would ask you to take a look before making a decision to go from a ten to a five. It's beautiful out there and ten acres and it's forest man and that's why we chose that rule. And now we feel like the red system's been pulled out and just almost two years has already changed it. And we could have done the same thing for the way and had four partials on her twenty acres. But we stayed within the rules and didn't ask for the zone change. So, thank you.
Wayne? You'll sign up. Come on up, sir.
Wayne Kraft, my name. Born and raised on Jewel Lake, born and earth eighty-seven years ago. I'll tell you, that property, it might surpass an art ten. The ground is steep and rocky and I don't think they can get a perk on any of it. But the four corners, if you bring them corners back up, the two ten acres on the east side, on the two, the north corner and the south corner, they might perfect. But those two five acre plots between them, that's thirty percent brown, rock, it's full of rock outcroppings. And I, I don't know what you build in there with because he's going to hit bedrock within ten feet, ain't it? The top side, it punts the forest service on the west. And it's, uh, like I say, ten acre plots would probably be feasible. The five acre plots in that area up there. That, I mean, the ecosystem just won't stand it. It's just way out of reason. Anybody worth common sense can look at it and see. And right away, it's a primitive right away, it moves to my place. I had to sign engagement when I sold a property twenty years ago to Kenny, Jimmy Lenton. And I don't think it needs any improvement. It'll probably just stay like it is. Or as far as I know, if it gets changed, I'll have to have a lawsuit out of it. So far as I'm concerned, our ten is where we're at. Our five in that particular area is way out of line. I think if anybody has observed it, went looked at it, there wouldn't be any question about it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Can I just make one more comment on the letters that came in and opposed to the project? Mike McIsaac, and he is a geophysicist and he, he has his masters and he doesn't currently work in that position, but they own property up on the hill also. And he went up there and did some intensive study around there and looked it up and he wrote a pretty in-depth letter in regards to soil up there in the rock. And that is a concern to all of us, you know? And what the sad thing about the whole thing, like I want to say, that, that stuff should have been done before wiping out all of the trees. It's just, it's bad. It's, it's devastating.
Warner County and it's based on timber.
Yeah.
And that's always been based on timber.
Seems like there wasn't any homework done.
Anyway, so we're going to close public.
Excuse me. You can get us an opportunity to talk.
Okay.
We still open?
Yes, go ahead. Name and address, if you'd like.
My name is Steve Johnson. I live at forty fifty-seven Jewel Lake Road, which is right here. One of our main concerns is septic leach fields. You put that many leach fields in there and photography pretty much puts this like this. And our well is right here at the bottom of that hill, that many septic system and gravity being like this, all that. Who is going to eventually end up down here in our well? That's what I'm thinking. Your staff report. There's a couple of what I believe errors in it. And one of them we've already talked about is the slope. Our five designation says fifteen to thirty percent. Our ten says above thirty-five percent or above thirty percent. Which should preclude it from going to our five. And then on page six. One of the justifications is we are, oh, VCRC twelve, yes, frequent three D two, our five in areas designated rural residential in the comprehensive plan. This is to make it through the hard five. There are already developed at or near one mill, one dwelling for five acre density. And all you have to do is look at Google Earth, look at that out, but we're not anywhere close to one in that Jewel Lake area. So that should be another reason to preclude it from going to our five, so I encourage the commission to leave it in zone art. How, how deep is your well? I don't know. There's no records for it. It was put in the UZ.
Don't you be using a water, route three twenty-five. My head.
I have water on that show, just for sure.
My name is Mary Randar. I also live at forty fifty-seven Jewel Lake Road. Also, that's below all that. And I, when we purchased that house, the timber was there. We weren't aware that it was going to be completely tear cut and I agree with the other woman that was there. Before we moved in, but before I moved in, all the trees are. And I understand this is a timber. I understand that completely, but I think that when you take timber down, you often leave trees so that it doesn't.
you often leave trees so that it doesn't look bare. My husband is a forester and he has done plenty of timber sales. And that is not doing what they do. I am again very concerned about the sewage and the leach field, not only how it affects my property specifically, but the lake that is below it and the sewage that would go into the lake and what kind of research has been done in reference to how that is going to affect our water that I'm going to be drinking. I came to the meeting last night. And one of the things Mr. Davis said, a couple of things for the safety of the people who are affected by this. The other thing that he said was that they would not, you know, where there are big clumps of blue on that map that they were showing us last night, that we weren't going to be putting light blue stuff in the middle of a blue section. So I quote him from that last night. And that would, if we did our five in that area, it would put a light blue area inside of a dark. I also want to know towards the person that if you put nine houses up there, that how are you dealing with the track of it? Of nine houses, houses on that road? And how is that going to affect Jewel Lake Road? You said there's flat benches. I live next door to that. And there does not appear to be a lot of flat benches up there for houses. It was difficult for our house. And our house is 1100 square feet. And you said on, in your statement earlier, that there's plenty of timber. Timber is not there anymore. It's gone.
Anybody else wish to speak? You will close that part of it. There's the property representative. Anything?
Seems like a big, one of the larger concerns with timber harvest on the property. It's got to a seed tree harvest fairly common method in the area. Commercial timber companies use it. Data by Ohio uses it, foresters use it. So it's an old, very mature stand. It's kind of even over mature. We harvested it to a seed tree. Over time, it'll seed back, forest or anything. In regards to the crabs, yes, I need to stop by and touch that spot to go and how that's all involved. So it's square.
Thank you. So we're going to close public comment and rebuttal. And we'll move on to missionary deliberations.
Standing that there's already a road to progress.
My first impression when I looked at the file was that this would create an island of five in the middle of 10. And I think that section in the description that talks about, you know, look at the area, see what's developed, see what the size of lots is. And if there are other talks about, in that sense, compatibility with the lot size, not necessarily with the designation. But I also looked at what's on the board now, the county's map that showed lots. There's a few places where they are. But I, I didn't get a chance to look at was the ground configuration of those areas that were previously large and small in lot size. And whether or not those had the slopes and so forth. So I'm kind of in the dark there.
That's right, sir. We hear you. We're sorry. You need to speak up.
Okay. What I was saying was, my first impression was that a five acre rezone, so rezoned to five acres in here would put one of those islands in the middle of tents. And then second to that, yes, there are other smaller lots developed in the area. But even now, looking at the slope map, it appears.
Those are small lots. No other comments.
Yeah, sorry. I know you're, you lived there and you lived there for a long time. We've made a comment, but we've got to follow our procedures. So we got to do this, we got to do this as best as we can refile at this point. But that, that map said volumes right there. That's all that dark orange is steep slopes. And they thinks that some of those other smaller lots fit onto not quite as steep ground, it appears. Nothing like the sub property. So I don't know. I pointed out earlier, this would add three lots to what could be developed today under the 10 acre zone. And that's the strange part because they still have to have subject approval from Panhandle District. If you go out there and search on one of the, it was to go to five acres and one of those proposed fives, can't perk it, you can't find a site, you can't find a site. And that becomes an unbuildable lot. So I know there's ways to develop it and so forth. But for the most part, face value, those are, anyway, they might become unbuildable lots. So who knows how many of those proposed fives would end up being to have a drain. It's all they're telling at this point.
So drain flows one design. There's other designs.
It is other designs. That's the core of this area. It's not like the old days where it doesn't perk, it doesn't perk. So it's not even technically a perk testing. Soil investigation. But part of that, I know they do, they dig a hole. They want it to be so they can see if bedrock occurs at the bottom of the hole because that's a dire situation. So
I think I recognize that characterized by slopes greater than 30% is a lot of interpretation. But to me, there's enough slopes above 30% on this property that I, in my opinion, I think it meets that criteria. It's obviously not all of it, but it's a significant percentage and distributed around through, through quite a bit of the area of the property. So I think that's my primary concern.
Well, and it's kind of it's got to toughen. I wish you could overlay the road onto that map because, you know, the road follows the obvious breaks. You know, you can tell that there's a flat ridge on top because there's no color. So if you were to, you know, develop the way that they put the road in, definitely lends itself to the land.
That's not what the code says really. Like it doesn't say steep slopes are okay. We lay in the road, the parkers.
So in that case, then you know, house. Or the hills of a bloodbottling. Or if there were better light are in the county, we could get a background pixel of slope on that.
Yeah.
Very large area.
So folks that I know who are right next to that, they end up selling because they couldn't get it. And then there's a house round towards the southwest. The big drain fields on, I know a department of land property.
Oh, yeah. The IDL doesn't have any land.
Yeah.
It's a tough area.
No, it doesn't. It's just the communication.
I'm going to give a shortage of housing. And that's what we're looking at. All that becomes a shorting of housing. My opinion, it's not a place to put housing. Not knowing the geography, data facts around them.
I guess thinking back about a month ago, we approved a zone change on this property that was worse than earlier than this one. Maybe.
Well, because of the word character. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but as staff, we do that as we bounce these things around and look at all the different features and factors. There's, there just are several. And of course, the, the conplan, the fact that it is designated to become our five and our 10, what is, is a big part of the recommendation. And then again, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at, you know, 60 acres. That's the size of, you know, a business car. And so to, you know, we have our staff that go out and smokes the property. We have our, our staff that's familiar with the area. And so in, in the discussions, it, it makes sense to be our five because again, of the benches that are allowed. I mean, we permit houses to be built by structures on areas like this all over the country. And you have codes in place that verify it. So that's why, that's my staff's recommendation is the way it is. The, the fact that it, that it may or may not hurt. This is what you know, the, the soil patch are another part of the decision. It says, not prime farmland, but well drained. And then here again, it says well drained, not prime farmland, but it's well drained. Which, which you would, you would think that perhaps it would hurt at some level. Nevertheless, if it doesn't, there are, there are many other applications to be addressed to. So especially five acre lots.
I don't know, the more data we help. I mean, this is one of the one of the situations that we get in. Whether seeing, watching the property would help, it's, it's the best. Granted, our, our slope mapping is not the best. It's going to get better someday.
Right now.
But it's
Like you said, it's need more houses, whoever, if they went to tents. House made you, maybe you
Yeah. Yeah. That's it. That's the same. It's pretty solid. But many of our areas are, now either past actions that have done things differently and ended up with this mixed pattern of lakes. And so it's confusing the best, but it is. That's my thought. The underlying principles of, of the continuity of the zoning and the conplan designations. I just can't bypass that. So get ready for a motion.
We're, we're closed, folks.
I know what you want.
Sure.
Sure. So these are for the benefit of the public. These zone change cases, we review them. We listen to what the staff says and what the public says, like the statements. But we make a recommendation to the Board of County Commission because the zone change, it changes the zoning map, the designation. And that takes orders. We don't pass orders. We're not elected officials, volunteers. What I'm going to look at is the conclusions of law. So this is Commissioner Davis. I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners denial of this project Z0, ZC0012-21, requesting a zone change from our 10 to our five based on the following conclusions. Conclusions of law. Conclusion one, the proposal is not in accord with certain of the elements of the Warner County Comprehensive Plan. Conclusion two, reviewed against Title 12 and was found, was not found to be in compliance. Conclusion three is that the proposal is is in accord with the is in accord with the purpose of the rural 10 zoning district provided Chapter 3 of Title 12 Martin's Code. The decision is based upon evidence submitted up to the time the Stafford Board was prepared and testimony received at the hearing for the move. That's appropriate or not. The I mean, the fact that conclusions of law as, as I received them. Section is not resolved to take private property. The action could be taken to obtain the zone change by filing a new application with the zoning plan department and meet the standards required by the code and pursue second. and pursue secondary uses maybe after the title six, seven chapters by title code. All right. I said all three.
What ones are one of them?
Oh, my, no. Land use probably.
Land use. The way it has to be serious and fine, including close, say that one. And
Commissioner Davis has made a motion to deny zone change Z C 0012 dash 21. Zone change rule 10 to rule five, nearly, I'll see. Need discussion?
Just want to just plainly say, that's not a reflection of the staff. As I've said many years. Now here's what the applicant says, what they want to do, and they work out, would they consider the things that would get to approval of that? And that's what they've done here, but I just, I just can't get to the same place. So that's my statement.
Okay, Commissioner Reed has his second. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three one. Say, we're going to take five minute stretch period here and then we'll move on to our next long change.
Thank you, folks.
Well, the board told us that, you know, it's not, like, haven't figured out the quality. Still working. Hey, being it's almost 7:10, get started again. Our next file is ZC 0007 dash 21, zone change, rule 10 to rule 5. Lou and Eugene Dillon are requesting a zone change from rule 10 to rule 5 for 10.6 acre, 10.67 acre parcel. Parcel zone rule 10, project is located off of Dunear Road. Private gravel road which runs south through the northwest corner of the property in section 32. Township 56 north, range five west, Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, would staff present the project, please?
Thank you for being here tonight, commissioners and members of the public, chat chambers for the record. So this is the property we're looking at, currently zoned as rural 10 acre. We're requesting a rezone of rule 5 acre. Road is not currently owned nor maintained by Bonner County Road and Bridge. So this is kind of a preview of the comprehensive land use plan. We can see that they're surrounded by rural residential properties and some ag forest land that's a little bit of a distance away. As I mentioned before, the property is currently zoned rural 10 acre. It's a budding of rule 5 acre zoning though. And again, we kind of got ag forest land in the distance there. So some of the characteristics of the site, it's a 10.67 acre parcel. It's in the rural residential comprehensive land use plan. Zone rule 10, somewhere near the privately owned gravel road and maintained. Uh, there are some slopes on the property between 15 to 29% gradient. We'll see a map of that in a moment here. There are no wetlands on the property. Soils are well drained. Served by an individual well, septic system. On the real. Under a fire. Of this, the utilities serve some power and it's in bars will distribute. Here's a map of the slopes you can see throughout the property. And we don't have that kind of darker orange gold shade. And so those slopes are between 15 and 29% gradient. Here are the two different types of soil of the property. Again, both are well drained. These are the applicable standards we use to review the file. So the rural 10 acre zoning is can be characterized by steeper slopes kind of prevailing throughout the property. Located within the areas where there's critical hotlet habitat. Containing prime axolos. Served by a network of public or private roads within a floodway and contain limited access to public services. And I think the distinction between our 10 and our five, what's particularly interesting about how Bonner County Revised Code is written is the first part kind of speaks to being developed already within the density of our five. So kind of thinking about having a primary dwelling unit and then an ADU on the property accessory dwelling unit. But it also says, and/or do not meet the criteria for our 10 above. This property is not within a floodway. Steeper slopes do not prevail throughout the property. Soils are well drained. So I'm not seeing it really meet those our 10 criteria. And so that's kind of my analysis here. The one thing I I would note is that, um, per the FEMA flood zone hazard map layer that we have in our GIS map, and it's in zone D, which basically means it's not been studied. And so we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Chair. With the project representative.
Just one question.
One check, okay.
So what you just talked about, flood hazard ZB. I didn't catch, is there a stream? Near or on the property?
I don't recall seeing one. We can certainly explore the map if you'd like. There are no wetlands on the property and there were no mapped floodways and or flood plains.
Just can't remember, can't remember the situation.
The zone D just means it has not been studied for flood risks.
Which, because there's, what's the, I think the designation is that there's just absolutely no possibility of it being a flood.
No, it's just, there's a few areas around the county that have not been studied. Some are pretty flooding, some are
We just didn't get to it and there's some possibility, but I couldn't
Darko Bay is zone D. Yeah, so.
Well, there's no water near there.
There's not. In the window.
Darko Bay goes like this. On two, on three sides, on one side it goes pretty, pretty.
When I was doing that, I used to manage the portion of the state ground up above there on Hoodie Mountain. And just with kind of the lake bed segments and the flooding. Most of the creeks that ran off Hoodie hit the valley bottom and kind of just disappeared.
Yeah. That's it. And I, that's what I was thinking. So I, I'm also not aware of a stream in that area, so I just wondered why this. Thank you.
Any other questions, the staff? Thank you, Chair. The project representative or the owner like to speak? Folks here? Okay, hearing none.
What do you hear? Are they online?
Anybody?
They're online, if the owner on.
Okay, so we'll open the public comment. Anybody in the public like to speak? Hearing none, we'll close that. Nobody online, Jeanie?
Nobody online.
Okay. Questions to staff before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to commissioners deliberations and motion.
So unlike the last one, at least this one's adjacent to our five. This would not be the island in the sea of blue. And the other parts of this whole easier to address than this one, it appears. And starting 10 acres left.
This is Commissioner Bradish. I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project filed ZC 0007 dash 21. Requesting a zone change from rule, rule 10 to rule 5, finding that it is in accord with general specific objectives of the Bonner County Conference of Plan and Bonner County Revised Code. Have been rated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the Stafford Board was prepared and testimony received at the hearing. I further move to recommend adoption of the following findings of facts and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of.
Commissioner Bradish has made a motion to approve zone change 0007 dash 21. Rule 10 to rule 5, Lou and Eugene Dillon. Is there a second?
Mr. Davis, I'll second that.
Commissioner Davis has a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's 7:20 and our next file is Zone Change 0009-21, Zone Change Ag Forest 20 to Ag Forest 10. Jacob Farley is requesting a zone change from agricultural Forest 20 to Agricultural Forest 10 on 10 acre, on a 10 acre parcel. Property is zone agricultural Forest 20. Project is located off VR, Vier Road and Rustic Way in Section 7, township 54 north, range 4 west, Boise Meridian. Any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, would staff present the project?
Thank you, commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Jason Johnson with Bonner County Planning. We are here today to discuss file ZC0009-21, a Zone Change application. This is Zone Change application from AF20 to AF10 for a 20 acre parcel. The site is mostly flat with a few slopes of less than 30% in the southeast corner. Here we have an image of the property along with some surrounding parcels. On the right-hand screen there, the dates that the required noticing was done on this file. So access to the site is provided via Bear Road, county-owned and county-maintained gravel road that's on the east side of the property. And via Rustic Way, a private road located on the west side of the property. The site is served by an individual well and septic system, services provided by Spirit Lake Fire District, Northern Lights, and Bonner School District number 83. It might be a little hard to see on the screen there, but the parcel is highlighted in blue here with the zoning on the left-hand side of the screen and here with the land use on the right-hand side of the screen showing the current zoning of Agricultural Forestry 20 and the current land use designation of Ag Forest 10 to 20. This is an image of the environmental features on the site. It's pretty unremarkable. There are a few steep slopes of less than 30% cred just in the southeast corner there, no mapped water courses. The soils are ponderate silt loam almost entirely. It's categorized as not being prime farmland. I went ahead and added this in here, removed the aerial photo, changed the background so that the parcel lines stand out a bit more to give an idea of the types of land divisions that exist around the site. We have some larger parcels to the north and to the west. But to the east and south, we have quite a few parcels that are smaller, some smaller than even five acres. So this is a list of the agencies that were noticed in the process of doing this, of reviewing this file. We got, most agencies commented no comment or did not reply. We did get a couple of comments. Idaho Department of Water Resources sent a comment basically reminding the applicant that there are thresholds beyond which if they draw water, they're going to need to secure water right. And as long as they stay underneath those thresholds, they have the option of applying for a water right but are not required to do so. We did get a comment from Spirit Lake Fire Chief DeBernardi. I'll just go ahead and read here what his comment was. "In review of the zone change to 10 acre parcels, this will increase home density in this area. This area was not designed for increased density. Bear Road is a long, narrow, steep road with limited access and egress routes. This does not allow for increased traffic load during inclement weather. Emergency vehicle access is limited. It also has heavily treed parcels. Wildland fire mitigation should be considered in this area. With all these factors in consideration in the event of an emergency, this could potentially become problematic for evacuation of the residents." We did receive one public comment. It proposed that there are several ways. This proposal's inconsistent with BCRC 12-111, which is the purpose section of the zoning code. And it also cited concerns about the road. Staff replies that 12-111 doesn't invalidate the code and enunciate the purposes of the adopted code. 12-111 exists to clarify that the code as adopted fulfills all the purposes outlined in BCRC 12-111. The zoning designations and their associated criterion standards, including the ones that we're going to be considering here today. That section of code exists to let us know that those, those criteria explicitly fulfill the purposes outlined in BCRC. As far as the road concerns go in the public comment, they did echo a lot of the concerns that were brought up by the Spirit Lake Fire Chief. So we're not looking at a comprehensive plan change today. It's going to remain ag forest land regardless of the decision that's made. It is a designation that recognizes areas where there's slopes steeper than 30%, where transportation is provided by private roads and urban services are not available. So the Ag Forest District was established to provide for agricultural and forestry pursuits. Forestry, horticulture, viviculture are part of the reason why this district exists. It exists to protect and preserve and maintain areas that are rural in character. It establishes rural density limits and conservation development standards to retain land that's sized for efficient farming or efficient timber use. So Ag Forest 20, in order to have something in Ag Forest 20, it should have some characteristics like prime axolos. Should be characterized by agricultural or forestry uses. And it should have one or more of the following applying to it, such as limited services, should be characterized by slopes steeper than 30%. It may have limited or substandard access or road systems or where large tracts of land are devoted to agriculture or forestry production. Ag Forest 10 is for those sites that do not feature prime axolos, but where forestry pursuits or agriculture remain viable. So the vast majority of this parcel does not feature prime agricultural soils. There is a very small area in the north, about 10,600 square feet, that is designated as prime farmland. The parcel is mostly forested. This parcel has no slopes greater than 30%. Most of it is forested. The site does have apparently limited emergency service availability, including limited fire protection. As he said, the road is long, narrow and steep, has limited access and egress. As far as AF10 review goes, again, the site doesn't have more than a very small area of prime axolos. It is mostly forested, is not within an area of city impact. But again, some road upgrades would be required to provide adequate emergency access and fire protection. So a little additional analysis here, leading up to the staff recommendation that's coming. BCRC 12-111, it lays out the purposes for Bonner County Revised Code, including all of the purposes for the zoning designations we previously examined. These purposes include fundamentally the promotion of health, safety and general welfare for the people of Bonner County. Ensuring that development on land is compatible with the physical characteristics of that land and ensuring the protection of life and property. Based on the comments received from Spirit Lake Fire Chief, this proposed development could only be compatible with the physical characteristics of the land if the approval is paired with the adoption of a notational recommendation that we're going to get to in another slide requiring road upgrades to accompany any future subdivisions of the rezoned parcel. So the notational recommendation that staff recommends in this case to make this approvable, I'm just going to go ahead and read it out loud here. "The governing boards have determined that future divisions of this land within the rezoned boundaries warrant paved surface, low-volume private roadways. Therefore, the following notation is required to be placed within the rezoned ordinance in lieu of conditional approval. And that is that future divisions of land within the rezoned boundaries described herein shall be developed with roadways meeting the low-volume private road standard set forth in Bonner County Revised Code, Title 12 Appendix A, Section 2.5A. Such roadways shall be paved. If it can be adopted with this notational recommendation, then staff recommends approval of the request for a zone change from Ag Forestry 20 to Ag Forestry 10 because the road seems to be the only issue standing in the way of that." Were there any questions?
Questions, yeah?
Yeah, Jason, this is Taylor. So you would, you'd be requiring paved surface roads inside of the parcel, but not necessarily the main road leading to it.
That may be something that we need to discuss here. It may be that the entire road needs to be upgraded. But that would need to be something that would be probably condone in cooperation with Spirit Lake Fire District at the time of subdivision. The fire chief cited concerns with the road. My question would be exactly which areas of the road are of concern? I mean, a road is a weakest, obviously a weakest link in the chain kind of thing. The road needs to be passable at every point or the road is not passable. So what do we need to do to make the road safe for people to, to get in and out?
So yeah, because in your investigation of the road, Jason, it's a dog days. It appears from Spirit Lake Cut off up to the property, it's about eight, it's a mile. Is that the end of the county maintenance at that point? Or is this corner of this parcel?
I, I would have to look at the map on that to know exactly where that is.
To get to the road on the west side of the parcel, we continue up further on the main road. And then bring it south, which kicks that distance to the southwest corner of the property of over a mile. So I think that's what it looked like when I tried to research it the best I could. So I think that gets the, Mr. Bradish question. What road are we talking about? It appears also, it's a 20 acre parcel going to two pens. It's split for the line either north, south, east, west. And it was a north-south line that, that would be parcel, the new parcel on the west would be accessed by that private road on the west and no interior roads. So the chief doesn't talk about the existence of road, but that's county name. Why is it in such horrible condition?
You do a good job. We like.
Yeah.
It was my understanding that the applicant is primarily gaining access to the parcel via rustic way currently.
Via rustic way? So he, he does go up and around and come back down to the property from north?
Any other questions, the staff? Project representative like to come up and speak, please? Name and address for the record?
Jacob Farley, 273 Rustic Way, Spirit Lake, but on the Bonner County side. For anybody who read the planning and zoning staff report, just want to make a correction, does say Sable, Washington. I don't know if there's a Sable, Washington, but Sable, Idaho. I've been a Bonner County resident for 23 years. To kind of introduce myself in the, in the area for a long time. I'm not a developer, I'm not trying to zone the neighborhood. I also as a local have concerns about development happening. I like keeping the rural characteristic of our area. I do think that stepping it from 20 down to 10 is an acceptable level of change. And it does keep the zoning relatively the same. There are some differentiation that Jason went over, but it stays forward to now. So we're not talking about changing that wave that is compatible with the comprehensive plan. It's my understanding. Our, I know this is a separate thing, but our intention is to do a family split if we qualify for that. My wife, me and my wife living on one side, my father and I living on the east side. He would have access on the inside via Bear Road. We are already using Rustic Way, as I think was mentioned. I, maybe I've been in North Idaho for too long, but Bear Road is not perfect. I think it could use an upgrade, but it's certainly not a bad road, in my opinion. I've been all over the county, I've seen many roads and Bear Road, I think is one of the better ones. I do disagree, oh, first I want to back up. I appreciate the work that staff has put into this and glad that they do recommend approval. But I do disagree with the, and I think we addressed this, singling out private road upgrades without even touching county road, which is what the fire chief's concern actually was. And I, I do think road, road upgrades that exist in private roads are necessary in my estimation. And I do want to note that I read Title 12 Appendix A, Section 2.5, and requirements for low-volume private roads, it does not require hard surface. So I don't know why that was added, but just wanted to note that. So thank you for allowing me to explain myself and introduce myself. Then I want to thank staff for the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, the staff? Folks, uh, Jeanie, is there anybody on the line? So we'll take those folks first.
Amber, you can talk if you, if you want to.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. My name's Dr. Amber Castlari. I'm with my husband, Anthony. We're above that parcel and I'm also with my father, who owns a 20 acre parcel just below, next to the Moss Brookers. And we're extremely concerned about the subdivision from 20 to 10 for many, many reasons. I'm going to highlight some of them and I know I have a timeframe and I know all of my other neighbors are there and I wish to also chime in. So a couple of things, because of the zoning. So for example, today our, our trail cam just caught, you know, several deer and a young moose walking along the property. And we're very concerned because we do butt up against the state property or the state land, excuse me, about the, the sensitive nature of those lands and the wildlife habitat if we were to subdivide and then everyone had the opportunity to subdivide into tens and add more homes, more cars, more electricity. There's so many problems with having the density so high because of increased pressure on say water sources. That, for me, that county road is a problem. I, I'm not really sure why my neighbor would say it's not a problem because all the other neighbors say it is a problem. But also that we all would have to share Rustic Way as a private road, which also would require much more upgrade if we had more cars driving along it. And also, I think the biggest issue for us is the precedence that this is setting in terms of subdividing and increasing the density right up against these forest lands. And, you know, if individual really wanted to create two dwellings on that property by county regulations, they are allowed to do so without actually subdividing. So if that is their rationale for doing it, I mean, they can go ahead and do it anyway without subdividing. I know my father is here as well, so there's two homeowners here. I know you can't really see us. But in speaking with all the other property owners in the area, I think we're all very concerned and we have the, the loose association called the Bear Valley Estates. And every single one of those individuals is finding that this is a problematic request. So thank you so much for your time.
Marilyn, you can speak now?
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Marilyn Jakewood. My husband Gary and I are joint owners of the property at 887 Bear Road, which is also known as Lot 2, Bear Creek Estates. We urge the Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission to retain or let's say to oppose the change of the zone from 20 acre plot to a 10 acre plot. And this is why. 20 acre parcels were the basis of all original parcel sizes of the Bear Creek Estates for the reasons cited by Spirit Lake Fire Chief DeBernardi. The road is steep and narrow and there. The road is steep and narrow, and there is only one way in and out of the neighborhood. In the event of a forest fire, all of our lives will be in extreme danger should the need to evacuate arise. We recall the Blanchard Fire last summer, which was not far away from the forested areas in the vicinity of Bear Road and Rustic Way. In winter time, vehicles have slipped off the road due to icy conditions. And during the drier seasons, vehicles are sometimes forced to the shoulder or off the road because of logging trucks, which are legitimately hauling out logs or by illegitimately speeding vehicles. There are 14 20 acre parcels that were part of the original Bear Creek Estates, all dependent on access by way of Bear Road, which can be accessed only from Spirit Lake Cut Off Road. Five of these parcels are under development this summer. The other eight parcels are currently undeveloped. However, at any time, the owners of these properties could choose to build or to sell to someone else who wants to build a residence. This potential for legitimate development and increasing population density must be a consideration before changing zoning from 20 acre to 10 acre parcels. To begin to allow rezoning from 20 acre parcels to 10 acre parcels invites an unwanted precedent, opening the way for further rezoning challenges and creating greater population density in an area which was never intended to be heavily populated. Chief DeBernardi has stated this area was not designed for increased density, and we concur. Please retain the current zoning of 20 acre parcels. Thank you.
Rob, you can talk now? Rob, can you talk now?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was on mute. This is Rob Taylor. I own 176 Rustic Way, directly across Rustic Way from the proposed subdivision. And the reason I purchased the property on Rustic Way was due to the low density population and the wildlife that we experience up there on the hill. The rezoning of that property would impact not only Bear Road, but it would also impact as stated Rustic Way. And this would unleash an explosion of requests for rezoning of the entirety of Spirit Lake Cut Off Road. It's not just about Bear Road and Rustic Way, but this would unleash it for anybody that had 20 acres out there. It's going to require additional wells, additional septic systems, additional traffic impact to a road that will require more maintenance by the county as it is. Additional maintenance to a private road that's privately maintained by us neighbors that are all here at this meeting now. This this proposal opens the door to allowing developers coming in to overbuild Spirit Lake Cut Off Road. I guess my question is, is the county prepared to upgrade the entirety of Spirit Lake Cut Off Road? Should this be allowed? Including Bear Road upgrades of what already is a dangerous intersection down at Spirit Lake Cut Off Road and Bear Road? It's on a 90 degree corner. There needs to be, are we going to put in a light out there? You know, at some point you get enough traffic and you're going to have to do something. Currently, there are only 20 acre lots in this area. There's no, nothing smaller than 20 acres in that area up Bear Road. There's lots up there that haven't even been built on at this point, 20 acre lots. If this individual wanted to build a couple of homes up there, they could have purchased two lots. That's kind of the the way that it is up there. I think it's imperative that we limit the growth in the outlying areas, especially Bear Road, Rustic Way, where everything is a 20 acre lot. I guess I echo the same concerns as Spirit Lake Fire Chief DeBernardi that that road is not prepared for a fire truck. I heard Mr. Farley discuss that he doesn't think that the road's in, you know, that bad of shape or 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 in his opinion, but I, to my knowledge, I don't think that Mr. Farley drives a fire truck. Driving a fire truck is a much different thing than driving a truck or a car up a road like that. Mr. Johnson didn't speak of the impacts it's going to have to the privately maintained Rustic Way, where all of us neighbors have to chip in and maintain that road. That is a privately maintained road, and that's by admission is the main access to the property at this point. I just cannot explain to you enough how I think that every neighbor up there is opposed to density population going anything more than 20 acres per lot up there. So I guess that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, online.
Okay.
Can we speak for the board?
So we have a couple of folks here on the floor that might speak, and we'll start with Thomas.
Here, sir. My name is Thomas Trexler. I reside at 52 Rustic Way. I want to start off by introducing here, I've labeled these, and I didn't know how it was going to work, so I'll pass it along when I'm done, but this is actually the protective covenants and restrictions that affect this plat of Bear Creek Estates. This has been recorded and is enforceable. I'll just read a couple of things in my time limited. These covenants are made for the purpose of creating and keeping the property known as Bear Creek Estates being a portion of as desirable and attractive as possible. These covenants are also written for the intention of guarding the property in its fires and preventing unnecessary interference with the natural beauty and environment of property and for the mutual benefit and protection of all owners of all lots in the subdivision. Use of the property within the subdivision shall at all times be in accordance with the zoning, subdivision, building, and other applicable rules and regulations of Bonner County, State Idaho. I do want to point out that the time this was reported in 2005, that this was zoned as Act 20, and this was recorded to maintain that that Act 1. In addition, I also want to address, I think Amber talked about the ABUs, so right now it's currently, we're currently able to go to house AB size and a house, I believe it's up to 900 square feet on the property. A fire hazard has also been previously discussed, has always been an issue. It is very densely forested and has been closed several times. Lastly, and probably one of the biggest concerns is Bear Road. So a couple of things on that. Spirit Lake Cut Off has a 15 mile an hour recommended corner. That's where Bear Road comes off. Every winter, there are numerous accidents because people just don't fully access the way here. So increasing traffic on that corner that's basically a blind former to an angry corner will cause, in my estimation, more accidents than we already encounter. On top of that, this picture was taken two days ago. I will pass this around. This is heading down Bear Road. These are log trucks that were stopped, and another vehicle attempted to go around, and this is getting the dips on the top. Now, this is dry weather, dry roads, clear day, middle of the day, and you can only imagine the winter time. In the winter time, where I was pulling people out of the ditch, visitors, homeowners, it's just the way it is. Even now, the washboard on that road is so bad that you're basically doing five to 10 miles an hour way down. I thank that all that I have, the lead time, but I do want to say that for myself and for the Casteloris and everybody that you've heard from, every letter from, we're not here presenting out of animosity or anything like that. We welcome the Farley's. We're a very tight knit community. We love each other. We help each other. The power's out, the barb generators or whatever. So know that this is only for the integrity of Bear Creek Estates. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
You have to give those to her.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
My name is Nigoy Moss Brooker. I go by Jacob Ward. I'm in San Diego. Welcome, guys. I do have some concerns as well, and I do have a couple of things that I'd give you out there that my wife and I live with both of them, and also are CCIMs that we have in place. So my first concern is that we did the same. We looked at property in the outlying areas. With the intent to buy in a less populated area. And we found this property in Spirit Lake, a cut off on Rustic Way, where actually I have this 280, which is just a kitty corner from the property. My first concern, we're opposed to this, I guess, don't change because of a few things, but my first concern is that it does seem in direct conflict with a covenant, which Tom actually just read the exact same one that I put on my letter, but I'm going to read it again. These covenants are also written for the intention of guarding the property against fires and preventing unnecessary interference with the natural beauty and environment of the property and for the mutual benefit and protection of all the owners and all lots in the subdivision. Changing the zoning will add additional dwellings, including arms, shops, and other open spaces, including the look of the area. It will have an impact in one. It's just a matter of fact, it's going to more houses, more buildings, more people will have an impact on the wildlife. We're trying to improve habitat in our property. This will be the opposite. More houses, there'll be more traffic. Bear Road is a dangerous road. I've been on it up and down many times, following the truck and trailer. We go very slow. It's barely a two lane road in some places. And Rustic Way is barely a step above North Horse Road. It's basically that with a little bit of that on it, and it is only a single lane road. So I understand the fire chief's concern. That's a big concern of ours as well. If there's a big fire breakout, how would we all get out? We would also be concerned about the the effect on water resources. We're in a valley. That valley goes right down towards their property and their neighbor. And if we're on the same water stream and using those resources, we could lose water pressure, we could lose water. So we have a big concern about the water resource. The other concern, of course, is that if this is allowed to happen, then everybody in that area can also develop. And we can go from having a dozen 20 acre lots to a couple dozen 10 acre lots. So that's my, that's our biggest concern, is that it's going to open it up for more development and more population and both the window and the resources. And any questions?
Thank you, sir. Glenn?
Good evening. I'm Glenn Trexler. I live at 1288 Bear Road. At the north end of Bear Road, the county road stops at the property line. It's private road on my side and then my adjacent neighbor's private road. We both are tributaries, me right there at the top of their road. Like to just reiterate what everybody else said, but we can't talk that. The big thing, though, has been said that once we start splitting these up, even though we have a CCIM that says 20 acre lots, once we start splitting, still from floodgates, we bought up there, everybody bought up there because it was 20 acres. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jim?
So my name is Jim Angles, so I would be one of the new neighbors, well, I'm going to be one of the new neighbors no matter what, whether it is with or not, from the approval on this. From what I've read, though, of the cop plan, it does qualify for, yes, with the overall county plan, what I can understand. And as far as the covenants that they have, I can't see that that overrules the cop plan. I do want to be sensitive to the neighbors. I've lived in Monash Berry, much in Way Springs before. I'm very familiar with North Idaho. Again, the road does have its issues, but considering it being North Idaho, it's pretty good. It's very, I mean, it didn't keep me from wanting, because I like it that it's street or that it's road. And I personally, my access wouldn't even be on Rustic Way. The only time I'd go up there might be to visit my neighbor. So I would be coming directly off Bear Road, my driveway. I understand I can have a shop with a, I think you call it auxiliary, 900 square foot building, which is is possible. It gives me more opportunity if I can, if we can split it legally tends, that I can build a home if I so desire in the future. The other thing is on the fire chief's recommendation, I know he's been in the area a long time, but I also know that he's heard that he's retiring soon, someone else is going to be taking his place. Maybe the new fire chief will have a different idea of how to service us in the future, whether we need to have water up there. I don't know what the exact issue is. The logging trucks are making nothing now, and I suppose the fire truck can make it up. It would be nice if the county would pave Bear Road. I'd be all for it. I know it will never happen, and of course, if we make more people up there, I guess, this I mean, I can't even think of any paved roads that are up in the mountain like that. But again, this is our Idaho. I do want, I'm not worried about the wildlife, my little impact on my little area for you other people. From what I can tell, it's not going to start an avalanche of people splitting their properties. Yes, it could open the door for that, but most of the people have already said they don't want to do it. So we would be kind of a little island above all these places. Again, my main reason would be so that I could build something, or that I could, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Go ahead.
My name is, my name is Gary Jakewood. I live or I have property at 887 Bear Road. I am right adjacent to the property in question. My wife is the one who is online, and we wrote that together. So I'm not going to reiterate the objections. I simply want to be physically here to say that I object to this zoning.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else online?
Sir? I got my, I got my minutes, but can I add one, one little fact about Bear Road and the broken bricks? Because they didn't respond. Just real quickly, so because we've always had a problem with that being less than a two lane road, we've asked about maybe extending it, and first of all, there's no money to even widen the road. Secondly, it's a steep drop off on one side and scoop uphill on the other side. And at the bottom, where it's some of the worst curves, there's Bear Creek that actually runs right along the road. So I don't think even widening would be useful in the first place. But I just wanted to add those things that just communication road break.
So both a public comment for the applicant? Yes, I'm asking you for it right now.
So first of all, I want to say thank you for the cordial welcoming. I hope that we all look together whether or not this proposal goes through. And I respect your objections. I do want to note that I do believe that there definitely is a parcel to the east that is less than 20 acres. I don't know the exact acres, but it's seven acres directly to the east. I also want to, I don't want to argue the fact that this makes that precedent. It might. I know in some cases it has, but at this juncture, it is a case by case basis. I had to apply to consider reusing just like other people that sometimes their proposal gets denied. And so it's not like everybody's proposal is going to be accepted. There are certain factors that have to be taken into account. So it is a case by case basis. I also want to comment on the roads. I do want to step back and say that perhaps I, I do want to step back and, and say that perhaps I'm, maybe I have a bias. I want to see if there's someone that's keeping the road a little better than what it is. I do think on the other side, maybe describing it a little worse than it is, maybe someone in the middle. But the context, what I'm saying is there's people coming from all over California here. I'm not saying any them or Californians or anything, but I was trying to explain that as an Idahoan, what I expect to see in a country road. I think favorite of the Bear Road. I've been all sorts of different roads. Last year, we're going to see a six-acre acre parcel. The road is windy, steep, narrow. You have to pass through a river where there's going to be. So things like that. I mean, that's more a worst-case scenario, but Bear, Bear Road is an actual, actually a very decent road. Um, it is consistent with the cop plan, and I think the interpretation of the covenants is incorrect. Uh, it does say that things have to be in accordance with zoning. I think by going through this process, it's in accordance with zoning. It's in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And it's not like by splitting our properties, we're wanting to make the place ugly and violate the other um, covenants that are on record, um, that we've agreed on. So I just wanted to clear that up. We do want to remain, uh, keep the area in the character that it is. Uh, want to keep it rural. I believe that ten acre minimum still allows us to keep it rural and maintain its character. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll close that portion. We'll move on to missionaries, deliberations, and a motion. To this file. Although as we know, we don't look at covenants or CC honors. No.
Yeah, it is interesting. It makes me wonder what the then-fire chief said when the subdivision.
Yeah, one of the things I was concerned is the bigger increase, population growth is the key. Undeveloped lots be developed.
Yeah.
Right, that's gonna change, change it much more dramatically than this particular split from the plan.
And granted, you know, the applicant is talking about a family action. Family actions only last as long as the family members wanted to. That can change with a B. But even so, again, it's, it's one after one. And it does trip with the comprehensive plan. Those criteria that are laid out there are pretty straightforward and.
You know, it comes back to, we've seen it before, the nine hundred square foot A D U triggers a lot of this because nine hundred square feet is just not enough. It's hard to make two thousand houses.
We talked about this before. Speak for yourself. I've lived in it.
The history course of the housing stock of preschool.
You gotta add a wheelchair in there. It's almost impossible.
It is. I think today's standard, right? So you're better than all that stuff. Yeah, it is. And, and granted, the opposite said, they much prefer to have separate ownership, not share the ownership with the father-in-law. Granted, that's a desire. That's the, you know, we don't need to know about the family dynamics and all that. Or your parents. It's a two-way, that's the basis, I think, of their, their proposal.
Yeah, but this one so clearly fits the comprehensive plan and the descriptions I'm resolving of the ten. It appears to fit.
Oh, yeah. Like, yeah, the C C R's are written in interesting way, because they have to follow the zoning and the zoning changes.
Yeah.
And there's, the code, the code closes a provision for change zoning based on criteria. So if it was changed, then it does.
Like the realtor's thing on trees.
Yeah. Yeah, it's based on those pictures. There's a hole on the tree being cut down. In this particular area, two logging trucks backed back along that road. Move down, which is probably not the least of it.
Well, okay. Who wants to go?
I'm just reading your code. There we go. Brush up on that code. What do we think about addressing the fire chief's concerns? I'm not sure that the, that the notational recommendation really addresses that, because it seems like the real issue is Bear Road.
Yeah, I.
And then it's just one road in the county that we have been talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Building subdivisions on, you know, logging roads. Yeah. That's an issue everywhere.
And as those previous logging roads, for whatever reason, were accepted by the county for maintenance, as the volume or activity on those roads does increase, then the county starts putting money toward them. We got a road out in our area that was cow path, and half of it was base rock that you were driving on. And because the lots are being developed, one at a time, but kept on going, the county came in and spent a whole bunch of money to put an additional top coat on that and widening it. So it's a very decent road, easier to maintain. I don't know. And I, I haven't talked with Broken Bridge about this road at all. But it's the pattern that we see around the county. Slow coming. It's all based on the volume on the road. So. Yeah.
All right, so. I'm gonna pop this one. So this is Commissioner Frankenbach. Uh, I'm moved to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project by L C C zero 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 nine dash twenty-one, requesting a zone change from agricultural forest three twenty to agricultural forest three ten for the parcel noted in the staff report, finding that it is in accordance with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Advised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to recommend adoption of the following findings of fact, the conclusions of law. This action did not result in taking private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve zone change zero 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 nine dash two one egg forest twenty to egg forest ten. Is there a second? Commissioner Davis, last second. Commissioner Davis with a second, need a special. Anything about paving or what? Nothing in there.
Motion didn't include it. Okay, we'll be fine. That's correct. It did approve.
Own favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Most of the carries. Okay, eight ten, we're gonna move on to our last file, which is A M zero 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 three dot twenty-one and zone change zero zero one zero dash one. Comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well. Mulgrew Capital LLC requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment for rural residential to suburban, and a zone change for rural five to suburban. Project is located on Crystal Down Lane, section twenty-nine, township fifty-six north, range three west, Boise, Meridian. Go ahead, Scott. All the conflict of interest?
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Go ahead.
This is the comprehensive plan map amendment request and a zone change request for Mulgrew Capital LLC. They are requesting a land use change from rural residential to suburban growth area and a zone change from rural five district to suburban district. This is five point one eight acres of vacant land that runs on Pendrell River. It is flatted as lot two of diesel-down acre subdivision, and it has access from highway two. The current zoning for the property is rural five, and the land use map designates us as rural residential. There are no slopes of over thirty percent, no mapped wetlands. The soil is classified as prime farmland soil if drained, and it is somewhat poorly drained soil. Uh, it consists of mule deer wintering critical wildlife habitat. This data was collected, uh, from I D F G in two thousand and two. Luckily, water district was agreeable to a petition for extension of water services to the site during preliminary discussions with the applicant. Uh, and the owner may elect to develop a shared well. Site has access to community drain field on lot one, as shown in this diagram. It has access of, it also has access to West Fire, West Side Fire District and Northern Lights Utility Company. It is located in Warner School eighty-three. We received some comments from Idaho Department of Water Resources and other agencies. So I D W R says that lot two would utilize the drain field on lot one, which is two fifty feet away from an existing well on the same lot. If water will be supplied from a common well, then a water right would need to be applied for and approved. According to Panhandle Health District, the home is constructed on lot, uh, the, the home constructed on the lot should be appropriate to the sizing of the drain field dedicated to it. And the agency recommends that the applicant contact P S G to assess septic feasibility. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, they do not review applications on a case-by-case basis, but encourage the applicant to review and utilize Idaho Environmental Guide to assist in addressing project-specific conditions. Cootney, Ponray, Seawood District, Independent Highway District, Pendrell Hospital District, and Idaho Department of Fish and Game replied with no comments on this case. And we did not receive any other agency or public comments. Uh, as per the land use definition for rural residential, um, land use, the analysis says that site has access to or has the potential to access urban water, sewer, fire, and power services. It does not contain slopes over thirty percent. It contains mule deer wintering area as per the Critical Wildlife Map that was created in two thousand and two. But, uh, we did not receive any comments from the agency confirming the presence of these critical areas. Uh, soil present on the site is classified as somewhat poorly drained farmland soil. Um, and it is unlikely to support small-scale agricultural uses. So the analysis does not support the current land use on the site. The site also, the site is located on the edges of higher density developments of Lake Lead. It has access to or has the potential of being served by urban water and sewer services. It is accessed by United States Highway two via an existing thirty-feet-wide private easement. This analysis supports the proposed land use of suburban growth area. We have already gone through the definition of R ten and R five several times this evening, so I will quickly go over what is required in rural ten and rural five. According to rural ten zoning, it, it is promoted in areas with more than thirty percent slopes, prime agricultural soils, access to a public or private roadways limited to public services, um, areas within floodways or those containing critical wildlife habitats. Rural five zoning promotes development in areas that are already developed at or near the density of one dwelling unit per five acres. The proposed suburban zoning district promotes development on the edges of other developed communities with potential access to urban services and primary transportation routes. As for this analysis, uh, the site is more in compliance with the proposed suburban zoning than with the current rural residential zoning. It is located on the edges of higher density developments of Lake Lead. Much of the surrounding area is developed at a density that is much higher than one dwelling unit per five acres. Property has access from United States Highway two. Soil is present on the property is not suitable, uh, for small-scale agricultural uses, as is proposed in the rural residential land use or, uh, rural ten or rural five zoning. Site does not contain slopes of over thirty percent. Urban services like water and sewer are either present or have the potential to be extended to the site. It will be served by West Side Fire District and Northern Lights Utility Company. Uh, again, uh, the Critical Wildlife Map shows that it has, uh, that it contains mule deer wintering, uh, what, critical wildlife habitat. Uh, however, we did not receive any agency comments confirming the presence of this habitat. With that, uh, staff concludes that the proposal is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, the Bonner County Revised Code, and it is in accord with suburban growth area land use and suburban district zoning. With that, staff recommends approval of these two requests. I can now take any questions.
Any questions, Scott? That's fine. Thank you. Jeremy. Jeremy.
No. He's got a thumb drive.
And remodel kitchen.
Are you taking the cabinet out? Okay. Gonna ruin your growish figure. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and my commissioners. We are all doing our work right now. Staff, basically. My name is Jeremy Graham, professional planner, owner of this planning. So thank you. I'm here today just to represent Mulgrew Capital. In their application for compliant map amendment and zone change. For lot two, Thistle Downs. Staff did a great job and we fully confirmed the recommendations for all this. Go through a couple of things here so you can have a better sense of. Why we confer with this. This is the most important thing is I'm learning I'm hunting for mule deer in the wrong area. So rural residential five ten to suburban growth and the zone change from rural five to suburban. As we look at the property, as staff mentioned, it is currently rural residential and you can see that conflict location to the west and to the east and the north. But you'll also see that there's some suburban growth. A little bit to the west and also the transition zone further to the west if you get the cleat. The zoning likewise is rural five, but you can see this box right next to suburban to the west, the river. More interesting when we look at this, even though it's rural five. You know, this, this, none of the surrounding lots around it really meet that, that size and that designation when you look to the. North or upriver or down river, they're all, they're all much smaller than, than the five acres of the rural five zone. Also interesting, you know, when you look to the upriver, you know, four lots of the upriver are just two feet wide. Whereas the subject parcel is four to the ten feet wide. And for area, non submerged portion, the lots upriver are plus or minus point six four acres and this lot is two point seven. Of non submerged land. And when we look down river, there are nineteen adjacent lots that are all smaller. And they also reflect that suburban building. They're all about a hundred and ten, most of them about a hundred and ten feet wide, whereas the subject parcel is about four to the ten feet wide. Finishing up here, if you look at this two point six five mile stretch of the river down the outside of the cleat. Lot two is the greatest width of any of these lots, so there are smaller lots on either side and this lot is sort of bookend by the development pattern. More than suburban zone, so lot two is currently an outlier as we would say. Staff presented this, I wouldn't sure they would, but it just showed the original Thistle Down. Platte with that dedicated drain field on lot one, I don't know if they're. You know, just going through staff report and comprehensive plan and zoning perspective. I know you've had a long day, so I'll save you from doing all this, but this is right out of the staff report, it meets all the criteria and it's supported by the con plan. For both the con plan amendment and the map amendment. I certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the official representative? Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Anybody online, Jane? Great, so. We'll need rebuttal. Can I, can I just clarify? Okay.
Oh, I missed your out.
I just wanted, I just wanted to show you because we're all, we're not all there, but some of you. So this. It, it is important to know that the. That back in twenty seventeen. This, this zone change was done as a zone change and comprehensive. The maps just have not been updated. But the, but the map does match.
Right up to the.
Yeah, it does, it does match the urban and suburban growth area, so those lots that are shown blue technically should be yellow. So I, it's just important to move it so you understand that.
Yeah, those are the answers.
So even though it shows rural residential.
I recall a lot of the same discussion.
So the only downer of the project is the hound dog.
Yeah, yeah. And they're, they're cut way, way back because those closing, the paper mill.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's, right.
Oh, no.
The best soil is on the other side. On the ground that they, they said something. Anyway, yep, it goes across there. It can't be used for that. Anyway. So, as we've said many times in these hearings. This is the one that. The past is staring us in the face. You ought to go. And make your things in agreement. Kind of across the board. Some of those lots to the up, down, the upriver. Surprise they're even that big, the dry land. Not much property there.
Thistle Down Road, all the services, what, are there? How many parks, maybe a couple down there?
I think there's three lots on the flat. Yeah, in the original Thistle. Thistle Down Lane used to be no highway. You ought to go. Across the tracks.
I will. I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file AM zero 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 three dash two one. Requesting a comprehensive plan amendments from rural residential to suburban growth area on five point one eight acres of land. Flatted as lot two of Thistle Down Acres subdivision in section twenty nine, township fifty six north, range three west, Boise, Meridian. Bonner County Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following. Law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, a testimony received at this hearing. I further move to recommend adoption of the following findings of fact, the conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in taking the private property.
Commissioner Frankenbach has made a motion to approve AM zero 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 three, there's two one. Comprehensive plan map and then, there's a second. Commissioner Reed with a second, all in favor. Excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Looking for second motion.
This is Commissioner Frankback again. I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file ZC. Zero zero one zero dash two one. Requesting a zone change from rural five district or five to suburban district on five point one acres of land flatted as lot two of Thistle Down Acres subdivision. In section twenty nine, township fifty six north, range three west, Boise, Meridian, Bonner County Idaho. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to recommend adoption of the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in taking a private property.
Commissioner Frankback has made a motion to approve zone change zero zero one zero dash two, two one. Zone change. Rural Capital LLC, is there a second? Commissioner Reed with a second, any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries for girl. Two wins in a month, my gosh.
Well, they don't all know that easy, but. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jeremy.
Thank you.
You've got three minutes. Three minutes until you see our everything. I know. I'm gonna go again next. However, we'll get our pool back. Have you, have you put in a request this or didn't? Mexican.
Oh.
Excuse me, with peanut. All right. I, I got nothing for you. We're pretty busy, still, I mean, the front's busy, lots of permits, lots of stuff going on. Definitely, if you see stuff on Facebook and it looks like our diagrams, it's, it's not, somebody else is taking them and way overstating what growth looks like in Bonner County. So, typical. We, we do have six hundred and fifty two permits that, you know, we're only at two hundred ahead of two thousand five. Well, and that's counting EESs, so we're actually, actually sure a hundred ahead of two, or a hundred ahead of us when we count EESs.
I'm sorry, what's it?
Uh, declarations. Now, Title eleven's been changing. We're working on, working on ideas on how to update the Title eleven. Building regulations. So compliance processes are continually being reviewed. We'll be meeting with the Board during this budget season now and so we'll be meeting with the Board during budget season to talk about how to, how they're gonna be compliant. The, everything else is busy, comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan is definitely gonna be the topic this year, so. Um, we know.
Any idea what we're gonna hear from pre-slate?
So they, they have been, I did get an email from them earlier this week asking about the map. The map. The map. So we need to get the pre-slate map finished and give it up to them so they can start. It was just a blank boundary map is what it was and they were gonna start.
Laying it on.
So if you say that, are we having? Yes, we do.
Betty hasn't heard that one.
Oh, we got, we, we are getting started to, start doing some more analysis. We need to talk a lot more about that on Monday as far as.
Well, they're starting to back the day there, you know, yeah, right now. Thinking through between now and then, so we can.
Yeah.
Our discussion, well, what to do next.
Yes, I need some data, put some presentation.
So Dave coming up, so Dave's gonna look into all the stuff that could be available through September. I know, your folks are doing it, some, some are doing it, but he can concentrate on it. Question, just really say. At the boundary, the water county area transportation meeting on Wednesday, on Tuesday. The federal rep from Crayton's office said that, sentence now said that all the data was put out. So that's cool, that's cool, and that's gonna full wrap the data that it's not just the population, talk about everything else in. If you survey the lives. So we're gonna find that data rich and we're looking to see how, how adequately we can break out the purely unincorporated county of the data, the data for the county in census tracks. This is all there, so that's what we're gonna try to find out, so. Once we get that and know how to get it and when we can get it. And we'll see what data we can get from agencies and such in the meantime.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my thought about it.
So we need our seventh person.
Yep.
We gotta, yeah, by the end of the month, next month.
Yep. Yeah, I'll get that.
Yeah, with vacation.
Workhorse.
I understand.
We'll go straight to the spread, so.
And then. Cheryl's gonna need a hearing device for, she can't, she can't get a sloty too well, so that.
I get it.
Might help her out a little bit.
I can bowl up.
Well, yeah, but it's a part she hears.
I understand.
I, I do.
We used to be a DJ.
We used to say. Even though I stood behind the screen.
Yeah. The mic's here.
You got it, we'll do the most.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did that very well. What does that mean?
Somebody wants to separate their land from big to tiny all over by them.
No, why don't you just create a, that's what we're gonna have to have upstairs? To the corner. Right? Sure. Okay. Anything else? I have barbecue next, next three.
We talked about that.
You can say.
I should. First, first meeting in July.
Yeah. I think we can bring some. So I got a question. Maybe I'm not cooking on my burns tonight. Oh, yeah. So we have these comprehensive plan map. And part of the rhetoric that we put into the, on the approval is that it meets the comprehensive plan. So as I pointed out to the SAGA group, those things do not, those applications amend the plan. They don't amend the plan. So, so that if it's, and the compliance with the plan says it gives flexibility, it can be of this or this. So that's where it still applies. But I'm wondering if that, I don't know, have a little. There's, there's a lot that we need to talk about there because, because we're creating a situation that when we go to lay down land specification, we're gonna have to really, it's gonna, these order changes are gonna force, force us to do a zoom in view. Because when you rezone a piece of property, you cannot rezone it again for four years. And so these zone changes are locked in. And so we're gonna have to, it's gonna force us to zoom in on those areas. I, I think we're better equipped to do it now. Yes. And so because even in two thousand four, five, when we did it before, sure, there was stuff that the county map wasn't there. It was, it was tabletop maps, so like, or USPS wise. So I think we're better equipped to do it. And that's thinking through. You do the straight line depictions first and you look at that line and see where the property. So and the terrain. So we can really prove how that these descriptions hold to that property or not. I think that's gonna make it better. There'll still be options for people to drink water to improve their life or, and that, why not? It's always a process as we discussed here. But if we get closer to reality on the ground, here we are. And even this, the thistle down thing today that we put it out. Somehow through the comprehensive plan, those old existing sort of urban renewal type thing are not gonna be changed. They shouldn't, that shouldn't cause, you know, do the whole lot to make the last two lots form everything. Somehow. I don't know. I know. Oh. Continue. It is, I mean, we, I looked at a piece of property today, it's like half of it is designated rezoning area, but the whole area is on Forest Sport eighteen. Yes, and we've got a few of those, we have one up at the end. And so he has to have a ten foot setback instead of five. Yeah, there's those little, little anomalies that we end up dealing with through an application. But why? It's not like they wouldn't recognize going in. Yeah. So. Get captured. Yeah, they just didn't make capture. Whether it was because of straight lines or looking quite close enough, I don't know. It's hard to say.
Well, when, when most of the Presley ideal cabin lots, the young forest boarding.
Most of them. Yes, and that was part of that room. So, yeah, we can somehow acknowledge those. Coming up with different criteria or performance standards or something. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So let's get out of here, being at eight forty-five. Yep. Thanks. This meeting's. Time. Sorry for my. That's all right. This meeting's continued to June third, which is next Thursday, five thirty, Highway two, fifteen hundred, Highway two, Sampson, Iowa, first floor conference room.